No questions asked.
Let us pray. Gracious God, we invoke your Spirit upon our deliberations this night. We ask that you would remind us of the fact that noble men and women seek office to serve the people, to honor the people and to lead the people. And so we give thanks for those before us this night who lead us in this wonderful community in which we live. We begin with thanksgiving for all the blessings that are ours. And no matter what our deliberations are this night, we should never forget what a wonderful community we live in and that we are blessed. We are also here tonight at the city council meeting preceding Memorial Day. And it is right that we should remember tonight those who gave the ultimate sacrifice so that we might exercise those freedoms we exercise tonight, that we may have the privilege of our democratic society, and that we may know that you are with us when we care for one another and when we as a community serve one another. We pray for all those men and women in military service, and we give thanks for those veterans who served and gave their lives so that we might celebrate tonight as we exercise our God-given freedoms. Remind us of those words, that freedom itself is never free, and we celebrate those noble men and women who have fought to give us those gifts. Here are our prayers, and let your Spirit be with us, for this we pray, in your name. Amen.
All please join me in the pleasure of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Even politicians.
I now open the May 20 regular city council meeting. Mrs. Bach, would you do the roll call, please?
Mr. Fletcher?
He's here.
Ms. Graves here. Mrs. Turner here. Mr. Kramer?
Here.
Mayor Winger?
Here. All right, preliminary matters, any agendas, additions, deletions, or adoptions, please?
Yes, Mayor, staff would like to add one item under City Managers Matters 6B. It's a change order for the demolition of a building at 2625 Airport Drive.
All right, if there's no further additions or deletions?
Motion to approve as amended.
Second? Call in favor? Aye. Opposed? It passes. Proclamation, Mr. Fletcher, please.
Anthony?
Mr. Yang. Colonel Yang, please.
I know this guy for the rest of the whole life. All of you guys, come on down, please. Marty, you're not getting out of it.
Oh, no, I'm not.
Oh, you're not? Well, that was a pretty well ... I don't want anything to do with those guys. Well, as you all know, Memorial Day is coming up, and it's special for the city of Vero Beach because it's going to be the 50th anniversary for our Memorial Island. And I'll just read this into the records. "Whereas the Memorial Day of the 50th Anniversary Veterans Memorial Island Sanctuary, and whereas Veterans Memorial Island Sanctuary is a place where people can pause to pay tribute and reflect upon those that have served their nation while visiting the island on their own, or while attending one of the approved memorial services that are held each year, and whereas in early 1900," this thing started a long time ago, it's actually more than 50 years, "early 1900 efforts began to dredge the Indian River by the 1930 U.S. Corps of Engineers maintained the international intercoastal waterway. And whereas after World War II, Mr. Alex McWilliams, Sr., a highly decorated World War I veteran and a member of the Florida Legislature successfully persuaded the federal government to reline the Vero Beach Canal to make way for the building of the Merrill P. Bar Bridge and to create a Memorial Island with a surplus dredging." Actually, my granddaddy had a part to do with that dredging. In the old days, he had to dredge and did a lot of work over there. "On May 5, 1947, the island was purchased by the city of Vero Beach with the intent of making a beautiful memorial to the veterans. And whereas 17 years later, on May 10, 1964, led by Alex McWilliams and the work of hundreds of Indian River County citizens and local community organizations, including the Garden Club, Vero Beach Beautification Society, the Indian River Memorial Sanctuary, was dedicated to veterans with inscription 'Least We Forget.'" On August 19, 2003, a Veterans Memorial Island Sanctuary Advisory Committee was created. Got to have a committee to do these things, guys. And the work of, on August 10, 2003, the Veterans Memorial Island Sanctuary Advisory Committee was created by the city of Vero Beach to assist in reviewing documentations for proposed memorials for the island. And for, on July 6, 2004, the name was formally changed to Memorial Island Park to Veterans Memorial Island Sanctuary. And whereas Veterans Memorial Island Sanctuary is now quite heaven for the reflection and participation education of the youth and the sacrifices made by the men and women who were residents of the Indian River County and died in combat while defending our country. Those of you that don't know, those memorials out there are all of veterans that died while in service. Now therefore, the city council of the city of Vero Beach does hereby proclaim May 26, 2014, be designated as the day of ceremony and celebration for the 50th anniversary of Veterans Memorial Island Sanctuary, and urge all citizens in this community to support and participate in the celebration to be held May 26, 2014, at Memorial Island Sanctuary. And I imagine you guys are going to tell us some details about that.
Most of you know who I am. My name is Tony Young, Colonel Young. I grew up here, and I never thought I'd have the opportunity to support the 50th anniversary for that island. As a kid, and Craig will recognize that, most of the islands out there, the spoil islands, had those Australian pines, and those are gone. And through the efforts of visionaries of Vero Beach and Indian River County, you now have a place where, right next to Riverside Park, you can walk out onto the island and have at your disposal a place that is beautiful as any place in the United States, that is set aside, not for recreation, not as, you know, any other park, but as a place where you can go and remember the sacrifice that men and women have made to our nation. And it's something that most of you, some of you will be here, but I won't be here for the next 50th anniversary. So I would just encourage you, we've taken a lot of effort from Monday morning at 8:50, there will be about 10 or 12 honor guards from the Marines and the Coast Guard and the Army, et cetera, that will move from the south end of the island into the center. And there with the Masters Academy, Fife and Drum Corps, the Vero Beach High School Band will recognize what Alex McWilliams and our pioneers had in mind when they thought that we would have a special honoring place for those men. And whether you're 16, 17, or 79, or 100, come and join us. And I would be remiss without recognizing all of the members of the committee, Barb Fallon and Joel Herman, in addition, help the staff here to set aside the island and make sure that it stays as beautiful as we find it today. So, Amalay?
Good evening, Mayor Winger and members of the city council. It certainly is a pleasure to stand before you tonight to say thank you to this council for the extra efforts that you all have made for so many years in the development of what we know as Veterans Memorial Island. But I also want to say thank you for taking the time to recognize that what we will be doing next Monday is really historical.
It is, yeah.
And I just want to invite you to be sure and be there. I think maybe you not only will enjoy it, but I believe maybe you might learn something about the early history of that island. But thank you to the city, all your staff, and all the efforts that are made to keep that the most beautiful sanctuary, veterans sanctuary, in the whole southeast. Thank you.
Thank you, Amalay. Come on, don't be shy. If I may, real quick, just because I passed out programs, a couple of the programs I noticed are the old, the almost final version. The final version does say 50th anniversary of Memorial Island on it, and that'll be on there. And on the cover of the program has the artwork by Lee Smith that's also going to be a cake after the Memorial Day ceremony, then we'll cut the cake with a Marine sword that Colonel Young's had me polish up to bring out. So it's not just the memorial service, but also the celebration of the Memorial Island. And I want to say it's wonderful living in a community that holds its veterans in such high regard, and I love the island and do enjoy working on the committee, so thanks for that.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, council. Thank you so much for this proclamation, and I'd like to say it's an honor to be on this committee with these fellow committee members. They're very dedicated to keeping the island what it is. And tonight, the Reverend spoke about freedom, and freedom is paid for with a price, and by people's lives and different parts of their bodies that are left behind, and the ones that have been active military, they understand what I'm saying. And what I will say is, God bless our men and women in the past and the ones in the present. We have a lot to do as a country. Thank you so much for the proclamation.
Thank you, guys, for the work you do. Come on down, Tony. Marty, I think this is your cue here. And I don't think Mr. Young is quite out of the woods. Is he part of this, your group?
Oh, yes.
Are you going to accept him into your group?
We don't let them out there.
Okay, this is a proclamation for Memorial Day. It states that Memorial Day, originally called Decoration Day, is a day of remembrance for those who have died in our nation's service. And Memorial Day was first observed on May 18, 68, when flowers were placed on the graves of Union and Confederate soldiers at Arlington National Cemetery. And Memorial Day is a day we pause collectively for a moment of reverence reflecting on the heroics of those who answered their call to their country to bear arms and to protect and preserve the ideals of democracy. And Memorial Day is cherished traditionally in our nation, and its observance helps us appreciate our history, our values, and our responsibilities by reminding us that freedom is not free. And the Veterans Council of Indian River County, consisting of about 20 veterans organizations representing over 18,000 veterans residing in the county, is holding Memorial Day services at Veterans Memorial Island on Monday, May 26, 2014. So it is that this council therefore declares May 16, 2014 as Memorial Day and urges all residents to attend Memorial Day ceremonies at the Veterans Memorial Island Sanctuary.
Marty?
Thank you, and thank you to the city council. Memorial Island, there's nothing like it. And, yep.
It is unique.
It is totally unique, and I've been a lot of places, so trust me, there is nothing like it. I want to thank you for the support you've given us, for the support you've given to the sanctuary committee. We couldn't do it without you. This has been an awesome month. The airshow, Memorial Day, 50th anniversary, a lot of things have gone on, and we thank you for the support of it. Like I said, we couldn't have done it without you. We look forward to it. For those of you who are the younger group, and obviously some of you, it's charter school kids. I have a granddaughter going to charter, graduating this year. It's a great opportunity to come and see, it'll be even more important to you if you come out on Monday and take a look. The reason you're here is because of veterans. Simple as that. Yep. We have the Veterans Council for a number of years has been trying to find the fire department. Not as easy as it sounds. And we did find them finally. And I want to take the opportunity to introduce John O'Connor. John is the firefighter's representative. I'll let you tell him exactly what he is with the Union. And we now have completed the organizations that we've been trying to put together. We have law enforcement, we have the military, and now we have the fire department. Those three organizations by themselves understand what it's like to give up your life for something you believe in. No other way to explain it to a civilian, sorry. But those of you who have been there understand that. So without further ado, let me introduce John.
Good evening. John O'Connor, President of the International Association of Firefighters here in Indian River County. I'm here in honor of our veterans. We created a 30-second PSA that we'd like to have aired, that will be airing on May 22 through the 26 on AMD, FX, and the History Channel, and TNT. We also provided a copy of the PSA for your review. We'd like to show that now, if we could.
Wow.
Yeah, that's a pretty wonderful piece. They did a good job on that. I can't believe it every time I see it. It almost renders me speechless. If I could request that the PSA be aired on the city's government channel from May 22 through the 26 in honor of our veterans here in the city. And it's a true honor to be up here with these gentlemen behind me in uniform. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
We'll proceed with that.
Thank you so much.
Tony, anyone else that would like to talk?
Real quick. I hate to follow the video because the video is incredibly incredible. But we have the recognition of the 50th anniversary, but also as important and more important is the recognition of the Memorial Day. And for the students that are here, I would just highlight, when you go on Memorial Island, in the center of the island, there's a square where there are 78 stones. And those stones are called cenotaphs, and I was a biology major, so I had to go back home and get out the dictionary to figure out what that was. But it's just a memorial marker. And when you serve in the military and you're in a conflict, whether you're on a bomber that shot down, or whether you're on a ship that goes down at sea, some men don't return. And in honor of those men that do not return, they have a memorial stone. So on the island, there are, you know, there's no one buried there, but there are 78 memorials for men like the Loudermilk family, which have two men there. One died in Iwo Jima, the other one died as a RTO, radio telephone operator in Vietnam. And on the reviewing stand will be two families that have lost loved ones in combat. In addition, there will be men and women from the various conflicts of all ranks. So it's a way not only to honor those that have given their lives, but also to the men that have come back and understand that. In addition to myself, Marty, Lynn St. Marie has worked on the Memorial Day effort to get that together, and it's a collective fight, as is John contributing. And so in your lives, no matter what your skill is, and all of us have different capacities, contribute, because it gives meaning to that. Whether you're a low-life soldier like myself, or an acclaimed Marine or Air Force, so.
Hi, everyone. I'm Lynn Marie St. Vincent, and I'm with the Military Moms Prayer Group. It's been our pleasure for the last couple of years to come alongside the Veterans Council and do what we can to help support. I am the mother of a veteran, just got out of her seven years in the Navy, and I also have a son in the Air Force, so it's very close to my heart to do what I can. And this year, I had the unique opportunity to work alongside these guys here and help get Memorial Day together, and it's been my pleasure.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
If I can take just a little more time, something that's going to happen that might affect you all is, we'll have 17 distinguished guests on the stage, and Colonel Ziegert has asked me to, he's going to take a little break after the airshow and a few other things, but to introduce those 17 distinguished guests. So the stage will be full of those veterans, so, and for the community, bring some chairs. I think we're going to have a lot of people out there, and it is difficult to get reserved seating for those.
And get the time again now, Monday?
Yes, sir. I think show-up time should be 8:30.
8:30.
8:50, it kind of starts according to the program, 9 o'clock, but if you're walking on the island at 9, you're late, and it's not appropriate to move during the National Anthem and some other things. So I'd say 8:30.
8:30 sounds good.
8:30, and bring a chair and some sunscreen.
We'll be there.
I'd like to say something about this, too. Every year, I'm proud to be there, and I don't have tears in my eyes very often, but this is a ceremony that I really do a couple times. One, they ask all the veterans to stand, and of course, Mr. Fletcher, Mr. Dagan, many others in the room, Colonel Young are Army veterans. I wasn't at Colonel Young's level, but I'm always proud to stand. It's a proud course of my life. The other thing that really, when we talk about the men that lost their life, I'm one of the ones old enough in the room, and in my life, we lost members of our family that I remember that I was terribly, terribly fond of as a boy. My father's brother, Bob, was killed in Anzio. And I always weep a bit, Marty, I always do. So I've got to tell you, this is a wonderful thing in Vero Beach.
Thanks again for all your work, guys.
So come forward, I guess, huh?
Come on down. Come on down. The simple ones are always the greatest ones. Little simple, little music, little killer PSA.
Well, now we'll move on to something more probably, and we'll move on to public comment. And if there are people who would like to comment on any subject, if they would show their hands and come forward, I'll take the left-hand side of the room first. I see a couple in the back, you're recognized. Mr. Lifeguard, all of a sudden, I'm having a senior moment. This, by the way, is my neighbor.
Hi, good evening. I'm Dr. Timothy McNamee. I'm one of the members of the Board of Directors for Vero Beach Lifeguard Association. As you've seen, a lot of increase in the tourism and visitors we've had to love Vero Beach in this past season, which I think is great. One of the things that I wanted to bring up is that with that increased tourism and traffic and increased home sales, there's been a big increase in people using our city beaches. One of the main things I like to see is, I go out in the morning, walking the dog, and I see a lot of people out on the beaches at different times, early in the morning or late in the afternoon, and where there's not lifeguards. And as a former emergency medicine physician, I think there's a lot, big risk to, visitors that don't know our beaches, don't know the rip currents, and don't know some of the risks that are out there. So one thing I like to see is that can we get increasing in terms of lifeguard staffing at Humstein Beach from a 9 to 5? I think it's at 10 to 3 currently, because I'm out there late in the afternoon. I see a lot of people out there, especially now it's light later, that they're out there, but the lifeguards are walking off the beach at 3 o'clock when there's still, you know, 100 people on the beach, and there's still that risk out there. One of the other things I also like to say is that I think with our lovely beaches, I think as we learn about this and educate the population that why there's an increase, and that I know budgets are tight, but it is important that we try to maintain the safety of our beaches for tourists and people that do reside here permanently. Hand it over to Dave?
Thanks for letting us speak to the mayor and city council. One of the things-
Name and address.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry to be impolite.
David Pharoah, 410, 46th Court, Vero Beach.
Thank you.
It's really important to me to be part of this, the great organization of the Vero Beach Lifeguards, working with them is important. I've tried to outline with them what I'd like to see the vision for the city is be thinking about increasing our areas of guarded beaches, and it's very important. I was a lifeguard myself, and one of the things that we were very proud of is we, I was guarding the largest guarded beach in the United States, which was 10 and 1/2 miles of guarded beach uninterrupted, and it was a seasonal town. That was the amazing part.
Where was that, David?
Ocean City, Maryland.
Yeah, okay.
And one of the things that we were charged with, I was 18 years old, and one of the things we were charged with is, they said, "You're having families come out here, you're having children and the elderly." And we have a record of no deaths in guarded beaches when the hours, so don't break our record. So, you know, you're 18 years old, you're listening to this, and it was important to every one of us as lifeguards. At that time, we had no radios, we used semaphore to talk, flags, and so, but we kept that record, and that record stayed, and it stayed for many years after, this was 1970, and it stayed for many years after, until the introduction of jet skis, and that's when they lost some lives. But that was unfortunate, there was machines that actually did it on the beach and not anything else. So, but, so, you know, when I see Vero Beach, the name Vero Beach, it's got beach in it, and, you know, we should be thinking about protecting the families that are out there. There's hotels on the beach right now, they come with their families, there's a new hotel being built, the Hampton Inn, they're not going to come and walk around and go shopping at Publix, they're going to go to the beach. And so one of the things that I want to look forward to is having an action plan for the next few years to increase our guarded areas, starting with Sexton Plaza, that's the number one spot. People come to Vero Beach, they want to see what it's all about, they pull up, they find a parking space, they take their family out, guess what? No lifeguard. So we need to change that, and that's part of the action plan, have an action plan for 2015 to 2017 to 2019, to where we increase our space. So every one of the city council members can say, "City of Vero Beach is fully covered with lifeguards on all of their beaches." Thank you very much.
Good evening. Eric Tombstone, 1351 White Heron Lane, Vero Beach. I'm the president of the Vero Beach Lifeguard Association and a proud staff member of the Ocean Rescue Lifeguards. We had 16 rescues so far this year, 70 last year. Part of our job is to be proactive, but we can't save what we can't see. So what we're asking you to do is, is don't forget about us come funding time. And we issue a Vero Beach Lifeguard Association report every month that you all get. I know you can't make it out to the beach, you're busy, but this is really, we're your eyes and ears out there, we'll let you know what's going on so you can be well-informed and given the information that you need. So thanks for your support.
Mr. Can I say a question? I'm sorry, yeah, I was looking at your report recently, and it said we had a record attendance in the March-April time period of 82,583 visitors to our beaches. I think people need to understand, yeah.
And that's just in the guarded and just off-guarded areas. So, Central Beach, Con Beach, none of that is taken into consideration.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Sure. By all means.
Scott Kavaness, seven forty, Thirty-Fifth Avenue, Vero Beach, Florida. I'm a Vero Beach Lifeguard Association member, board member, and a local business owner with Sharkbait. I deal with a lot of the local resource. I know there's a lot, I'm hearing a lot of chatter about, especially this Sexton Beach area and the limited time that the Humiston area is guarded. And that's coming from them down to me, and they really kind of need to get organized amongst themselves and form a little action group to bring to you, to stress the importance that they feel that the beaches need to be guarded effectively. And if any beach, all the beaches should be actively guarded, but when you have local beaches that are predominantly patronized by locals, they, a lot of them understand the risks, but in that Central Beach area, you have the Pep Reef, which is pre-tributated erosion prevention barrier running right there. All somebody has to do is dive, to duck-dive underneath a wave and hit that concrete wall headfirst. It could be a very bad situation, and that's one of the beach areas that has no limited guards. The Humiston Beach is closed down early, and there's no guard at Sexton Plaza. And we just picked up, recently picked up the Holiday Inn Oceanside. In that area, I'm constantly seeing people diving in there, and I'm helping with the buoys with the Indian River County Coastal Engineer to maintain that buoy system, which we need to get out there and do something with that right away. But it's a constant hazard. That Pep Reef is way more dangerous, and people realize, and I think that to have more effective guards, guarding hours and manning in that area is really vital, from my perspective.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your comments. They're most welcome. On the left side, further public comment. I see a hand in the back. I can't see who it is, but come forward.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Zachary. I live at two-six-two-six, Eleventh Court, Vero Beach. I work with the Vero Beach Chamber of Commerce, and I'm the film liaison, and I wanted to address you all tonight, just to let you know, we are going to proactively go for the film business and not just wait for them to call. And I know you all know when a feature film comes in, there's a lot of money put into the local economy. We're going after the other side of the film business. These are productions that people never see. They're documentaries, trade show films, promotional videos, training, industrials, and these are usually smaller production companies, but they still need a place to shoot. Sometimes they rent maybe five to twenty-five motel rooms. They rent cars, vans, trucks, equipment, and they cater or eat out every single meal. Now, they're not going to put a million dollars into our economy, but if we had enough of them, it'd be the same thing. It's not cost-effective for us to go to a location expo, of course, but we can make a presence at the Florida Film Commission's Expo. We can take our materials and give to them, and they'll give them out for us, because we have some great things here to offer. Number one, we're halfway between Orlando and Miami. There's any film vendor or production service available in those two spots, but you don't have to drive around in their traffic when you shoot here in Vero. And we have some great old Florida locations. There's no possible way to duplicate inside a soundstage. Also, we have another great asset here that hasn't been used to promote film, and that's Dodger Town. Imagine housing your production where everything is in one spot behind one gate. Also, we can do all that year-round. Mid-June, we're going to have a company come in here. They're from New York. It's called All Mobile Video, and they're shooting a documentary. That was our first call. We went out and scouted, sent them some photos back, and they loved it. One of those is Memorial Island. They want a sunset shot. So, they're going to be shooting here in June. What I'd like to do is, some of the people in the chamber come, get together with the city manager and find out how we can speed up the permit process and make it, to make sure that all assets of the city are protected, find out what's needed from the city, but streamline it so somebody can make a phone call and say, "Can we shoot there next week?" And we're able to do it. I am the world's largest Jeep fan. The headboard of my bed is a Jeep grill with the headlights that light up. When the four-door Wrangler came out, I put a bid in on a regional commercial, the four-door Wrangler. We needed to shoot with the Jeep going down the beach thirty miles an hour for a hundred feet. I spent four days on the phone, calling anybody that I knew in the city, the county, the state. I was going to call Washington. I called Senator Herradopoulos. No one could give an answer whether we could shoot on the beach or not. So, that commercial went to Daytona, where they paid five dollars to put the car on the beach. Anyway, we're going to get together and see what the city needs to streamline, streamline this process, and maybe put together a pictorial tour of Vero Beach that we can have immediate to send out. But just wanted to let you know, we're not going to wait for those calls. We're going to go after them, scan the trades and see anything with a Florida location that we can offer with one of our many water locales. We're going to do it, and we're going to get the business to come here. Thank you.
Jim, can you facilitate that?
Certainly will. I'll be willing to work with he or Penny, the one. We've worked pretty close with the chamber on many functions and activities. Putting a car on the beach may be a little bit of a challenge, but--
Not with turtles.
If we can get something, yeah.
Anyone else on the left? Right? Who would like to come forward, please? Any further public comment, Mr. Wilson?
Good evening. Charlie Wilson, twenty-one thirty-four, Eighteenth Avenue. Two things. First of all, Jeff doesn't have anything to do with the Indian River Chamber of Commerce. It's the Vero Beach Chamber of Commerce that's arranging it, and so, if you contact Penny, she won't know what you're talking about. So, you know, the city has many things that, that concern it, and we've had many years of, of wrangling about very important issues. But today, one of the things that I, watching this presentation and watching that video and listening to our fine men and women, I remember that with the airshow last week, one of the things that I struck me was how well that brought the community together. We didn't talk about electric. We didn't talk about water and sewer. We didn't talk about dog parks. We didn't talk about anything. We talked about the airshow. And so, I think we should continue to do that. Now, there's still many issues, and maybe we'll talk about it later on the agenda when we get to electric. But for right now, I would just like to, to remind ourselves of what a wonderful community we live in, to thank people like Marty Zickert for that wonderful airshow. Wasn't that just fabulous? We're going to be talking about that for generations to come, and it was just fabulous. And there's also some good news, like Scotty Emrick, who is singing tonight on national television along with Toby Keith. He's a local boy, and some of us remember, you know, watching him play around town, and we certainly wish him well, and, and how proud we are of Scotty Emrick. We also had a very fine young lady who won the golf challenge. I don't know if you read that today.
Yep.
And I, I've watched that show many times, and if you haven't watched, it's really very exciting. It's really quite an accomplishment that she was able, that, that she was able to do that. So, you know, I'm going to take a break, and notwithstanding all this verbiage that keeps getting longer and longer and longer, we'll take a break from, from our arguments about things like electric and, and that are very, very important. But let's remember, this is Memorial Day coming up, and how fortunate and wonderful a community that, that we live in. So, take a break. You get a day off.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson, and I concur. This is a wonderful community, and I was so proud of the community at the airshow, but I was also proud when, this is Turner and I were at the DARE presentation on Friday, and we had, I don't know, a hundred and fifty or something, fifth graders, great young people at the Beasley School. And I was, I got a chance to be on Marshall Littlejohn and Bob Seuss, and one television, one radio. I got to talk about what a wonderful town this is. And indeed, we really all are blessed, and I concur with your comments. I guess further public comment? Seeing none, I'll close public comment then, and we'll move on to the consent agenda. Do I have, would a member of council like to change it, or do I have a motion to adopt this?
Public comment on consent.
Okay, thank you. Any comment? There, there are two items on the consent agenda, since I'm reading and it's not up there. The council minutes, and then the renewal of contract cooling tower emergency service contract with Midwest Cooling Towers, Florida Mechanical. This is a renewal of service we would have in such cases, if there was a hurricane, we have a standby contractor to come in and, and do restoration as we need it. No comment? Okay.
Move to adopt as presented.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five to nothing. We'll move on to public ordinances, three A. Three A is an ordinance of the city of Vero Beach, Florida, ending section six-four of the code of the city of Vero Beach to allow sale, service, and consumption of alcohol beverages until two AM, providing conflict and severalability, providing for codification, providing for an effective date. And for the public, the current, current cutoff date is one o'clock. Next thing would be staff comment and then public comment.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor and Council. The staff has reviewed this through the planning department, the police department, and we have no objection to the changing of the hour from one to two.
I would open it up to public comment, because I would think there would be some. Okay, seeing none. Oh, there is. I see. Come forward.
My name's Michael Jones, sixteen twenty, Forty-second Square, Vero Beach. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Last week, Ms. Turner, you pointed out a question you had, kind of wondering about the data. I'm the one who drafted the letter--
Thank you.
--on behalf of many of these business owners we have here today. And what we did was, as you saw, this letter had over twenty-five businesses sign it. And what we were able to do is take their data, see what the revenue would be during the hour of twelve to one, and that data showed that, on the average, the mean was approximately two thousand dollars a week per business. So, just of the twenty-five that signed, that would end up being over two-point-six million dollars in annual revenue to local businesses here. There are also several of the businesses who didn't sign or didn't work with us on it. So, it'd be over probably, over three million dollars in annual revenue provided to them. Also, during that twelve-to-one hour, there's multiple of the businesses that get twenty to twenty-five percent of their annual revenue just during that one hour. So, by extending it an additional hour, it could be life-changing for many of these businesses. We, we know that, that Vero is Vero, and we want to keep Vero Vero. And it's a seasonal town, and we see that most people here only spend a part of the time, but they want the businesses served year-round. Many of these owners here struggle during the off-season to keep their doors open. By providing that extra twenty to twenty-five percent of annual revenue, we'll be able to see these businesses keep their doors open and keep people employed. And so, I wanted to address your concern from the last hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. Ms. Turner, go forward.
Mr. Jones, just a question on, sorry, I didn't write it down. I, I had heard from some of the, some bar owners that the extra hour, it's not just that one hour of revenue, that we have people that'll leave our local bars at eleven o'clock and go, you know, to Fort Pierce, to the Pineapples, to whatever, or leave our county so that they can go, stay out and party longer. So, you're not losing just that extra hour of revenue. You're losing several hours.
That's very true, and that's one of the, we don't have quantifiable data to prove how many people leave. But we do know, and many of these owners here can echo that concern, that they see patrons leaving and driving across, and so, we're losing that. And we can keep people, retain the patrons here, and increase the revenue.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, I guess. Any further public comment? Okay, I'll close public comment. Discussion by council or council comments. This is, I would make this preliminary comment. This is one of these things that really has two sides, and I think we have to recognize that. And for the students that are here, we have an interesting quandary. In the state of Florida, elected officials have to vote. This is one that I could easily not vote on, quite frankly, but in the state of Florida, we have to vote. That's part, and we also have to come unless we're, have an excused absence. So, I, I want to give that preference, because it does, it is double-sided, really. Ms. Turner, would you like to comment further?
Just for clarification, I understand that all of Indian River County is at one o'clock.
That's my understanding as well.
And this is a request just for, you know, the thirteen square miles of Vero Beach to be able to serve alcohol till two.
Yes, ma'am. And it, it also, I think, gives us sort of a, a unique spot. In fact, improves our business position, which we are sort of the core of the business of Indian River County.
Well, serving on the Tourist Development Council, I mean, we have had record tourism. They are continuing to, to pursue tourists even during the, the summer months, and obviously their desire to party for a reunion or for a wedding, you know, being able to stay open an extra hour. I do notice that Chief Curry's here.
Absolutely appropriate.
If it'd be appropriate, Mr. Mayor, I would love to hear Chief Curry's comments.
Would you lead the discussion then, Mrs. Turner?
Well, I, I said, I just really would like to, yeah. Thank you very much for staying so late with us.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, David Curry, Police Chief. We do, as Mr. O'Connor said, and, and we, we do not object to the extension of the one hour. Over the years, of course, we, we respond to any problems or issues, and we work well with the, the restaurants and the bars establishments, as far as that goes. And overall, we don't really have that many problems with them. They handle a lot of their issues without us, but we're always there and, if they need us. As far as, you know, the extra hour, again, you know, it's all about, to us, it's all about being responsible. So, whether you're drinking till midnight, one or two, or eleven, you have to be responsible as far as when you leave the establishment, when you get in your car and drive. And we are around twenty-four hours.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes.
Mr. Fletcher, would you like to comment?
I still, I still--
I know you have a view on this.
This is one of the few times I'll oppose Chief Curry. I, I still think this is enabling legislature that, just going to enable somebody to get drunker than they already are. Everybody needs to be home by one o'clock. I don't, I'm, I'm very, very strong, feel strongly about this. I can't support this at all.
That's a valid point of view. I think this is, Ms. Graves, your comments, if you have any. You don't have to make them if you don't want.
No, I, I think this is, for the businesses, I think it gives the city a unique position where, instead of going out to dinner or staying out in the county, you might patron our city businesses, because you have that extended time period. I think that if you're going to make a poor choice, you're going to make it at one, and you're going to make it at two, and we can't legislate people making better decisions. So, if this is what businesses want, and it's going to increase the revenue for them, for, maybe even offer more opportunity to hire more people. So, I'm for it.
Mr. Kramer, would you like to comment?
Well, I, I would. I'd kind of like to ask permission of the, of the council to maybe modify this just a little bit. I'd like to see this sunset after the end of the year, and then have Mr. Curry come back after the end of that year and let us know what the effects are of this ordinance.
I'd support that.
Because, you know, I, you know, I've had some people talk to me pretty strongly about this, and, you know, they're, they make some pretty valid points. And I'd, I'd like to be able to, to give the, the restaurant owners the benefit of the doubt, but I'd like to be able to make sure that at the end of maybe a year period, that there's proof that this hasn't been a detriment to our, our community.
You want to see a sunset clause in this? Is that what you want to see?
Yes.
Are you saying for a calendar year in December, or--
Yeah.
Because then we would, are you talking to this date or to December?
Yeah, that's a big difference.
Well, I mean, a, a year from when we enact--
Twelve, twelve calendar months.
Correct.
I'd like to comment on this, too, and, and I've had a number of contacts, and there's some negatives to it. Mr. Fletcher, side them. I'm a proponent of keeping Vero Vero a small town and keeping our Florida way of life. I also grew up in southeastern Pennsylvania where we had blue laws, and I never liked blue laws. This isn't really quite a blue law, but it, it, it touches on it. I also, I'm something of a Jeffersonian. I don't like laws where we don't need them. I also saw that prohibition, I mean, it, it didn't work. I, I don't think you can legislate it. And, and further, this is increasingly one of our important things that we have here, tourists that come from around the world. I was just in Italy, and, yeah, I, personally, I'm in bed pretty early. As a matter of fact, I want to tell you how early, and this would make no difference to me one way or another, but there are people that come from around the world, where, where I was in Italy recently, they eat dinner at nine-thirty and go out. So, I can live with what Mr. Kramer suggests nicely. I think, I, I think it's a little more important issue than just to pass it and go on with life, but I, I, I can support what he said.
I'd just like to say, it does certainly put additional responsibility on our bars and our restaurant owners to watch their bartenders, to make sure they're not over-serving people, to be responsible, not letting them, yeah, leave your establishment in anebriated condition. And we'll be watching, right, Chief?
We will be.
And we are watching. As the chief said, we are watching today. I mean, there's no question, we do go into the bars and check IDs and that kind of stuff, so that's--
Mr. Kramer, do you want to make a motion?
Well, Mayor, if I can make a suggestion, is to make it a date certain, that it would expire unless reenacted by the council.
Yeah, do the first week in November or something.
Well, pick a date, May first, June first.
If, if you're going to do it from year, from enactment-- If you're going to do it from year from enactment, if you could pick June 15, 2015.
All right, then I'll make a motion to approve with the amendment that it would expire on June 15, 2015.
And a report will be given by the police department prior to that date.
And I'll second that. Do we need a roll call on that?
Yes.
Mr. Fletcher?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mayor Winger?
Yes. I think, again, for the students that are here, we're legislatures. We don't run the city. The city is run by the city manager, and the police department's run by the police chief. And I think what you saw is us trying to reach a useful compromise when, the truth of it is, there's two sides to this story. And that's, of course, our job. And, you know, I think it's interesting that we were able to find a middle ground, which is important. It's important in government. With that little bit of lecture, I will move on.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. All right. B is a resolution, B resolution is a resolution of the City of Vero Beach, Florida, establishing an audit committee pursuant to Section 218, 391 Florida statutes, providing for committee membership, providing for duties of audit committee, and providing for effective date requested by the finance director.
As you know, we are required by law to have a audit committee, and so we went to the finance mission. They have appointed three members, Catherine Barton, Randolph Old, and Noah Powers, as the representatives on the audit committee. All three of those folks have very strong financial backgrounds and will work, I think, very well in the selection process. The finance director, obviously, will be working with that committee.
Jim, is there a sunset on that? I was just, what's the time span we're talking about here?
Just when they select the auditors, make a recommend an auditor selection, selected, then that audit committee would go away. We would come back next time we do an audit, which would probably.
So it just dies of its own.
No, no, this, the way the resolution's drafted, it doesn't, I mean, they would stay in existence, but they're really, their only duty is to work each, you know, when there's an auditor needs to be selected.
Okay.
You could put a termination date if you wish to do so.
If you.
Because we'd probably get an auditor when we have an auditor.
It's hard to set a date on something. You don't know when, how long it's going to take. But I was curious, is it, how do we, this seems, it's, I've been here so long, this committee has been in session for 10 years that I know of. It never sunsets. I don't understand that. That's what I was.
You could make October the 1st, 2014 is the sunset, because hopefully we'll have an auditor by that time. Wait a minute.
Maybe November the 1st.
November, November the 1st.
Is that satisfactory, counsel?
Yeah, that's, that sounds.
I think Finance Director would like to say something.
Yes.
I think it's just helpful to have it established as an outside committee, because in the past, what we've been doing is it's just been a subset of the whole finance commission that's been doing audit. So I think that was the reason, I'm sorry, Ms. Larson, please address it.
Words in your mouth there.
You know, per Florida statutes, you can assign other duties to the audit committee, but their primary duty, and that's the way the resolution reads, is to help you with the selection of an auditor. So you can have them sunset in, you know, November, when we select a new auditor. You can leave them in place in case down the road, there may be other things that you want them to do. However, a year or so down the road, all those same people might not be willing to volunteer. So I agree, maybe it'd be best to put a date certain on this one, and, yeah.
All right. Public comment, too. Is there a public comment about this? Every year, the city has to be audited, and this has to do with a committee that we would have relative to that audit. And there would be three people from the finance commission that would serve on that committee.
Mr. Mayor, these are the folks who would help recommend an auditor for the city back to the city council.
Right. Thanks for the clarification.
I have one other suggestion, too. I noticed under membership of the committee, it names three specific individuals. And if one of those persons, for some reason, resigns or is unable to serve, I'd suggest maybe we should add a line there. The following persons, you know, shall be members except as perhaps otherwise provided by the council. So in case you can fill a slot that becomes empty or something for some reason, you never know what's going to happen.
Should there be an alternate?
I would not recommend that we just plug a name in there at this point, because the finance committee really did take some time.
Yes.
But you could put a clause in there that just says, if one of these members happens to no longer want to be a part of this, or for some reason, that a new member could be appointed by the city council.
Ms. Buck, can you make a motion out of that?
I can.
Motion to approve a staff recommendation with changes.
We have no public hearing.
With the expiration in November 14. And the, except as, the candidates, except as otherwise provided by council.
So amended.
Second.
All right. And we have a motion and a second. We have no comment from the public, so Tammy, roll call.
Mr. Fletcher?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mayor Winger?
Yes. All right, now we move on to 4A, first reading by title for ordinance and resolutions that require a future hearing. When would this be heard again, please?
June 3rd.
June 3rd. All right. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Vero Beach, Florida, adopting a revised schedule, providing fees and charges for use of recreation department facilities and equipment, and for participation in recreation programs, providing for an effective date requested by the recreation director. Staff comment, please.
Yes, this is really an update to, you've passed some fees and charges in the past, and there were some that were being questioned. We brought those back to the recreation commission. Rob is here to address any particular, but there's nothing that really stands out in particular on these issues. And I think we addressed the concerns that were brought forward when we had the initial fee adjustments that we were doing.
Ms. Turner, comment?
How did you know I had a question?
I can see.
What it, good, good, how are you?
How are you?
Great, good to have you here. Question on the county performing arts. It looked like those were the only county rates that we reduced. And I thought that was kind of, I'm not sure why we reduced those rates. Performing arts, page 13.
Performing arts.
Aerial and.
Some of the adult aerial, proposed new fees, current rates, county. Rob Sleazak, Recreation Director. One of the things that we did when we spoke with the staff, and we went through all of our programs, when we addressed each and every one of those programs, some of the programs that our staff looked at felt like we can increase, increase some, but lower some, just to get the participation levels to their max. And that was the idea.
Okay, that those programs were just more dollar-sensitive participation.
Correct. Absolutely.
Further questions?
Move to adopt as presented.
For a second hearing on the 3rd.
On the 3rd.
Second.
Mrs. Buck?
Mr. Fletcher?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mayor Winger?
Yes. All right. Now, city councilors, I'll turn the podium over to you, Mrs. Buck.
Actually, I'm looking for Mr. McGary. This is actually his item.
There he is, hiding back there.
He was lurking in the back there.
Mr. McGary did many pages of work on this particular issue. It reads.
For the record, I'm Tim McGary, the Director of Planning and Development for the city. I don't know if the applicant's here.
I believe they're sitting, yeah.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. All right. I mean, I think, I have a, you might want to hear from the applicant, probably want to challenge what my recommendation is. But as, we did a detailed look at this, there were multiple violations on this property. Normally, when we deal with banks and that, when the lispenance is filed, that's when we normally say that there's dual responsibilities there. If you've read the report, we did many attempts to bring this into compliance. In fact, the city ended up having to go out there and bring in the final two violations into compliance on this property. Therefore, I mean, I went through and gave the consideration of factors. We feel that definitely our out-of-pocket costs should be covered, including abatement that had to be done on the building, and some percentage of the outstanding liens on the property. We use 40% as a max. It's pretty discretionary. It was, we've got factors, but it's really going to be a policy call from you, but we feel that's fair for this property. And just to be aware that there's, there were two properties involved, that the owners had two properties. We have different owners under the property, but these liens cover all the properties. So we're recommending for the, just apologize here. I was hoping this could be covered by, for a sum of $8,051.97, that would cover the liens, that would, we release the liens on this property, but not the, we'd have to, the other lien would be kept on the other property. And then we'd have to do some filing records for that. So unless you have specific questions.
Well, I do. What's the gross amount before, tell us the gross amount and the number.
The gross amount was, amount that they have in liens on this was $14,575.
And you're recommending, please.
I'm recommending $8,051.97.
All right. Would you like to comment, please?
Good evening. My name's Christina Ripple, 4475 61st Court, Vero Beach. I represent Fannie Mae. We acquired this property in December of 2012. That was tenant occupied, so we were not able to physically go on the property until it was vacated, which was a year later in December 2013. Upon us taking possession of the property, we got what was left to get into compliance that we needed to. So we didn't have the property very long. I don't think that Fannie Mae should have to pay for the liens from the previous owner, and that it should, most of that should stick with that person and the other properties that they own and are leaned. So my request was about 10% of the amount of the lien.
$1,500, more or less.
Yeah.
Questions, please, of the council? Do you have questions?
Tim, how long has this been in, how long have we been chasing this thing? I mean, it's been like a couple of years, hasn't it?
Well, it started with a violation, goes back 2005. So this has been going on for a very, very long time. And, yes, I think.
And that's going to cover all of our costs.
That should cover our costs, as I said, that the amount you want to reduce, the actual lien outside our out-of-pocket cost is really a policy call for you.
Yeah.
I said at 40%. Certainly, you're listening to the applicant here, taking what she has to say. All I would like to point out, though, in Fannie Mae's case, and not trying to, be smirched the record here. But when we did the abatement, they also sent an invoice and never paid for any of that. So I think that, to me, is not a sign of a good faith here. And there may had reasons they did it, but we have to look at this. I guess the biggest concern you have, if you start a washing away all these fines, I mean, nobody's going to do anything because they think they can change it over.
Yep.
And that's our problem.
That's the danger.
But the other thing is, we need some reduction because this thing's, these structures in terrible shape. We don't want to leave it in that situation. So it's kind of a balancing act to get this back in, and rolls in occupied or repaired and brought up the snuff.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, Tim. I trust your judgment on this, as you've been doing this for a long time.
Is the $8,051 the out-of-pocket expenses from Vero Beach?
Pardon?
Is that our out-of-pocket expense, the $8,051?
No, the out-of-pocket is about $1,200. You know, what I calculated, I'm sure it's more than that. My repair, preparing this report costs more than that. But we only got $100 for that, so.
But the council, just as another point of order, one of the things that we've been doing in the last couple of years, a little more aggressively, we've actually gone out and started doing cleanup on these properties. And so we've got to have the funds in order to be able to do it.
Yep.
And the only group that I know of that would be responsible for paying those funds were the folks that have some ownership or future ownership of the property, because we do place liens. Therefore, when you acquire the property, you know exactly what you're getting into.
And that's a good segue. I just want to point out, though, in next year, this coming budget, we will have a line item for this abatement. Because it's the kind of thing that.
Yeah, it starts draining your budget.
We're just pulling money, and we need to have a budget for it.
Is there any further public comment, or would you like to comment further?
The, just so you know, that the property is, just went up for auction, so it should be changing ownership hopefully soon, within the next month. Thank you.
Just out of curiosity, what is the expected value of the property that you hope to get?
Well, there's, once it goes to auction, I kind of, as the broker, step back and don't have.
No control.
Right. So I really don't know what, I'm like, I get the last end of it of when it's under contract, and they have an auction company that kind of takes over.
What do they start it at?
They, I don't even have that information. They, you know, people can place bids, the public can place their own bid, and they can reject it right up front, but I don't know what that is, their minimum is at that point either.
All right, thanks for your comment. Mr. Gaffanti, would you like to comment?
Joseph Gaffanti, 441 Holly Road. I sort of resent the fact that you would use somebody else's misfortune to make a property. The gentleman from the city said that the out-of-pocket expenses is $1,200. The lady from Fannie Mae, I think, said she would, willing to pay 15. That would be an ample profit if you don't deserve one at all. This, people are in trouble financially, and the city hopes to cash in on that. I don't think that's smart.
Thanks for your comments.
I move to adopt staff recommendations.
I'll second it. That's, that's the $8,000?
Yes.
$8,051.
You know, and I comment, I, we're asked here to sit and judge. And effectively, unless I have some reason to think that staff is, is not on base, we shouldn't be micromanaging, in my opinion. I have to support staff.
Well, in this instance, what this is, is a debt owed to the city, and it's purely in the council's discretion as to how much relief you grant.
I understand the last word is ours, but I have to take the recommendation.
Coming down from $40,000 is a generous reduction, I think.
I think.
Any further comment?
Well, I definitely think it should be more than 15, but less than 8,000. You know, I mean, you have to have some punitive amount in there so that people don't do it. And you have to have it high enough so that people just don't go ahead and decide and let the city do all the cleanup work.
That's why they call it punitive.
Well, yeah, I'm, I'm floating somewhere between the 15 and the 8. I don't, I just want to make sure, you know, we don't.
Yeah, I understand, I understand your position.
Your comments, you know, are valid. Ms. Turner, you have any comment?
So we have a motion and a second, Ms. Graves.
All right, I'll call a motion, Mrs. Buck.
Mr. Fletcher?
Yes.
Mrs. Graves?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
No.
Yes.
Motion passes four to one. I just have a few other items. I had put a memo in your box concerning the High Speed Rail Commission, and they asked me to get the okay from council to report to them at your June 17 meeting. They knew that they sunsetted on June 9 and do need to have a report to you, but their next meeting is not until June 4. So it's kind of after our June 3 meeting. So if council doesn't have a problem with them bringing the report to you at June 17?
Yeah, that's fine with the mayor.
Yeah, I have no objection.
Sure.
And one other thing, I had put a letter in your box from Mr. Tom Young, who was asking that his friend, Mr. Tom Lone, who is, been chosen to take an honor flight to Washington, he sent a letter from the council congratulating him. And when he is on the flight, they will give him this letter, which they call mail call. I guess it used to be in the service. Just wanted to get permission for the mayor's signature on that letter.
I would definitely endorse that.
Sounds great.
Absolutely. That's all. Thank you.
Well, I have one other thing under your matters, too. And this is from Mrs. Winchester, Mr. Charlotte Winchester. And I don't think you've all seen it, but it came into Tammy. Vero Beach City Council, the beautiful, and I can't read, flower or plant is a lovely tribute to Warren. It's big and healthy like he used to be. It will be, we will enjoy carrying, caring for it and having it. Many thanks, Charlotte Winchester. And, you know, Warren was a great servant of the city, a former mayor who passed on here in the recent past. And we appreciate the note, Mrs. Winchester. We really do. All right. I guess we're on to city managers' meetings, matters.
Yes, the second quarter fiscal year, electric utility rates efficiency. We did the analysis of that and are recommending a 4.2% decrease in electric rates. We think that'll maintain the revenue stream we need and also the cash reserves at the end of the year will be preserved.
What is our current cash reserve?
Right at 30, right at 30 million.
But how many days?
Which is about 86 days.
86 days?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there a public comment about this? Seeing none, is there a council comment?
Is that our normal reserve, Jim? It seems high.
Yes, it is. We try to shoot for around 90 days. We think we'll hit that 90-day mark by the end of the year with the, even with the reduction. We look at about a $900,000 addition to that reserve, hopefully is what will occur. And so this, we thought, was a pretty good period to do it. One, it's the high heat month of the summer, so it's giving the customers a little bit of a break. At the same time, with our projection of revenues and, and the growth in sales have been, you know, sort of matching that of what the visitors, because the more people they put into the Holiday Inn rooms, the more they use their lights and air conditioning, so.
All right. A motion then?
Move to adopt.
Go ahead, Ms. Turner. I'm sorry.
One more question. No, actually, this is a question for you, Mr. Mayor. I guess further down on the agenda, we have an item, initiate a rate structure and sufficiency study. To date, our staff has been doing this rate sufficiency study. Were you not satisfied with that or feel that they're not qualified to be doing it, that you're looking to go outside? Do you have any issue with this?
No, the answer to the question is, having been to the Finance Commission, the Utilities Commission, where both of them talked about this, and having listened, and I think we need to have the city manager and the finance manager comment about this. The general feeling was that the last time we really looked at our rates was 2009. We really had it professionally studied. And, you know, there, I would have a number of questions. For instance, are the, if I can say the word, auxiliary charges, like hookup charges, are they the proper charges? Are our rates structured across the spectrum the way they really should be? Is, is the split between fuel costs and fixed really what it should be? And I'm not saying that any of those things are anything in particular, but I did hear from the two commissions, and I did hear from Mrs. Lawson and Mr. O'Connor, that they thought it was probably timely. And in light of the fact that anything we can do that would bring down rates, whether it's the 1.2% we did in January, or, or the matter in front of us under the city managers' meeting, I do think it's, it's time that we, we invested to understand. I think Mrs. Lawson has done a great job, Mrs. O'Connor, Mr. O'Connor's done a great job, but I really do think it's time for an outside look at it.
Okay, thanks. Wanted to make sure you didn't have any other reservations yet before we took a vote on this matter.
No, I have no reservations about this. It is more, and Tom is here, too, from Tom Richards.
Okay, we can get, yeah, we can get into it later. They're just, thank you.
No reservation. I'm sorry, I over answered your question. We have a motion?
I made a motion to adopt as presented.
Second.
Staff recommendation.
Can you second, Ms. Graves?
Yes, I do.
All right. Further discussion?
No.
A roll call, Mrs. Bach?
Mr. Fletcher?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mayor Winger?
Yes.
I have one other item. We have submitted our letter to become a cooperating agency as it deals with the Olive Board Florida issue. We did a little research on that, and the key is, is to try to get ourselves out in front and to be able to become part of the information passing that's going to take place in a timely manner. So we plan to do that as well.
The county and Sebastian have also applied.
I don't think the counties applied yet. They got the authority to do that today.
Or they voted to do that today?
Yes, they have. Uh huh. So I think all of us are doing it. The, one of the things we want is as quickly as we can get a copy of the EIS draft is, is the important part. What we've learned through our research on this cooperating thing is that those will be the agencies that will get the first release. One other item, and it was an amendment to the agenda, and that is on the PNC demolition and construction. This is the old restaurant on the airport property. The airport director is here. But we found when we took the building down, that there was a large tower that the Air Force had on that site, and the concrete goes several feet down.
Oh, no.
And you can't just build over the top of it, although somebody did put a restaurant there. But a bank has a little more reservation than to put it over this. And so the, the cost of demolition has gone up drastically. We are still hoping, and we think that the state will pay 50% of that through the grant application that we've had. But Eric, if you want to give a little more detail.
Thank you, Jim, and thank you, members of council, for allowing us to be added to the agenda at last minute. Eric Menjer, Airport Director, and I can tell you, 10 days ago, I was much more enamored with the Navy than I am today after finding the huge chunks of concrete underneath this. We got into the demolition and took off the building, took down the foundation, took away some of the parking lot and found another foundation, another entire parking lot underneath there that was entirely constructed over. And one of, as Jim said, one of the huge chunks of concrete apparently was a base of a smoke stack that used to be a, one of the Navy facilities.
I remember that as a kid, yeah.
Yeah. And I guess when they built over in the 60s, the engineering design standards maybe weren't the same or whatever, but if.
A little sketchy.
We definitely have to remove this. And the cost is, we think is a reasonable estimate from the contractor. It is a not-to-exceed cost such that if anything, it should be less than this. But we also don't know if, once we get some of this concrete out in the second parking lot, what we might find underneath there. I hope I don't have to come back again. We did get a, a approval from the state today that they would cover 50% of the cost underneath the existing grant that we've already accepted. So at least that's some good news. So that the cost of the airport at this point would be about $67,000 and then the other 67 and change from the state.
Also, just to add, the tenant that is proposed to go on that site, we will be collecting enough to more than cover our proportion of share.
Yeah, that used to be an incinerator. Great, huge stack was there.
When, when would this, when would this be happening?
The demolition?
Mm-hmm.
It's already underway, and they, they're going to have to rent some heavier equipment to take out the larger chunks of concrete. So it should be done by, say, the middle of June.
And we're removing the concrete to, and we're putting it at the land?
Dirt. It will be, we'll have to bring in some additional dirt if, if necessary.
Okay. Have we talked to the county at all if they want the concrete, only because they just received a grant to build a artificial reef?
Yeah.
And it has to be completed by August 21. So they're going into their reserves of old concrete left over from the Merrill Barber Bridge.
We've got some for them, that's for sure.
So.
We can, we can contact.
If they want it, we don't have to dump it.
If you'd overline, we'll contact Chris Moore.
Well, it's free concrete. They have, they have.
The price is right.
They have a very small timeline to get the concrete out on the reef.
Okay, I'll, I'll contact them.
I think the concrete actually will belong to the contractor who's taking it out. And I'm sure if he doesn't have to pay landfill fees, he'll probably be very happy to find another site. So we can do that.
Will do.
All right. Thanks.
With Adam, for approval.
Second. Hall of favor, I believe we can do it voice, can we not?
Aye.
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 Post, 5-0.
Thank you. Good luck. Let's not find anything else.
Does that move us to city attorney matters, please? Wayne?
Yes, sir. If you remember, the council had approved a concession license agreement for Sharkbait to rent umbrellas and chairs at South Beach, the northern part of the beach. Part of the arrangement was that he's going to have an ATV, which he's purchased to move his equipment from storage to the beach and back again. And part of, part of the deal was the, he was going to allow the lifeguards to use the ATV. Well, unfortunately, he ran into a snag with his insurance, having to do with the city operating his ATV. And quite frankly, our insurance carrier wasn't real thrilled either. So to solve that, basically, the best suggestion we could come up with is the city's just going to forego the use of the ATV under the agreement. If you remember, that, basically, the policy is, if you're going to use public property like that to run a business and make a profit, although the city's getting, I think, a whole 10% of revenue or something, it's still at your risk. And in fact, Sharkbait does have to indemnify the city, and that's one of the problems with us using.
It's too broad.
The ATV, it's, it's making their risk, his insurance company's risk, just too much, and they wouldn't cover it. So that's why we're asking, I think the city manager may have already signed, and Scott has already signed the amendment. And if we, you can just ratify it, he can go forth and continue with his plans.
Just as you all had heard earlier, he is a member of the Vero Beach Lifeguard Association, and the owner of Sharkbait has been involved in some of the rescues and issues that have occurred at the beach. So I don't think this is going to stand in the way that if he has his ATV there and there's an emergency, he'll make sure that it's used appropriately.
I think there's probably going to be general consensus on this, to do what you want, Wayne.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah. Move to adopt staff recommendation.
Second.
Hall of favor, aye.
Aye.
Do you want to talk now that we've approved it?
Now we've already.
I'd just like to express my appreciation to Rob, who's done an excellent job of putting up with my BS. We've already started to try to add activities and try to boost tourism in the area. We just managed, Rob was really nice to help try to expedite some permitting for a catamaran sailboat race to come through the area, which is a multi-stage race from Isla Marata up to Cocoa Beach. It's a 300-mile race called the Florida 300. It's going to be an annual race. And they're actually going to extend it out to Jacksonville, I think, next year, from Key West to Jacksonville. So I think it's going to be like a Florida 500 next year. But this, the, the race organizers found me at Costa de Este, and we worked really hard, and Rob was really nice to help get that pushed through. I really want the ATV to be able to be used by the lifeguards, personally. That's, it's, it is, we, there was a lot of back and forth because they just said, well, forget about it. Don't worry about the ATV. And I said, no, let's try to work it out. And I went back to my insurance provider, and there was a lot of back and forth. And finally, it was just, let's just get it done type of thing. But if there is some way that we can do a hold harmless or something like that in the future where the lifeguards can use it, or I don't know the legalities involved.
Don't talk about hold harmless around our attorney, please. He gets very, very nervous. He's very risk avoidant. But I'm sure, Scott, if we have a major issue, that something will be worked out.
Okay.
Thank you.
Know that you're right in your assessment, and I will react in any way that I'm able.
Thank you.
All right. Do you have further matters, or does anyone have further matters for the city attorney? Okay, seeing none, we go on to the subject that Mrs. Turner and I were talking about, which is electric rate structure and rate sufficiency study. And I, I've, it's on a sheet of paper here, what I said a minute ago, but Jim, or would you or your staff like to comment? I mean, do you agree with me or disagree?
We, we can comment on this. The rate sufficiency part of it, I think, is going to be a very small element. We feel very good about our numbers. The rate structure, on the other hand, is another issue. Now, we have, I guess internally, and Tom and Cindy and I have talked about this, the way our rate structure is, it's been in place so long under our contracts that we have on our power supply agreements, does it actually place the cost associated with the type of use that a customer has is somewhat questionable. The rate structure study would try to do that. Another part of that that we would like to impose is maybe have the optimization part of that in that rate structure, but have, hopefully find a firm or two, a team of, a couple of firms to look at the optimization to make sure some of the direction that we are planning, and again, I rely on Tom and Ted and the TND and Tom, obviously, and the transmission to sort of set the course of how we're going to achieve the objectives that the council has directed us to do, and that is to try to reduce the cost of electricity in the city of Vero Beach. We have some internal ideas on how to do that, but at the same time, maybe having a third party. We obviously were pretty successful in the water and sewer area, so maybe if there was some way that we could have that overview as well. So that's really the two parts of the discussion that we have talked about and do endorse.
Anybody else from staff that you want to comment, or I guess I guessed it, Mr. Wilson? That public comment is appropriate? Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you very much. Charlie Wilson, 2134 18th Avenue in Vero Beach. First of all, thank you for your vote in reducing the rates. We all want lower rates. We're glad that we're trying to work for lower rates. We are still suffering, however, under a series of poor choices by previous councils and particularly previous legal staff. I don't know how it is that we got in such a place where the OUC and the FMPA were so well-represented by their legal staff and we certainly not so much. We're kind, we're finding out. We have been promised rates as low as FPNL since 1976. Mayor, you were not the mayor when I bought a copy of a newspaper ad that was run in 1976, saying, if you would just wait a couple of more weeks, we will have rates lower than FPNL. That was 35 years ago. Recently, most customers got a letter from FPNL, similar to this one. And one of the most telling things in this letter, because we now know, most people recognize that the only way we'll actually get to the lowest rate that that can be enjoyed by the city residents is by a sale. And it appears that the only way to a sale, because we've gone from a done deal to a dead deal in all of five months, is that, is quoted in this letter from FPNL, and it says, "We continue to believe that motivated parties working in good faith can bring the sale to conclusion and in turn make lower rates for you a reality." And so that is where we are. In order to get to a sale, to enable to get to the rates, we have to have motivated parties working in good faith. That includes a council that is motivated and working in good faith, and a seller, the FMPA, who is motivated and working in good faith. I have two questions having to do with this rate structure, and if I can, this particular item. My question is, are, whether we're going to address two things. The mayor at a meeting of the Taxpayers Association last week indicated that he would oppose any legal challenge to the FMPA contract by the city council. And.
That's inaccurate, Mr. Wilson. That's not.
Okay. Well, perhaps you can, that's why I'm asking, if you would like to explain why, it sounded like you would oppose. You would oppose, you opposed getting, going along with the county and the Indian River shores in their effort. Is that more accurate? Anyway, I'll let you answer. The second thing is, you, you, so the question is, is will this council address, either in this rate study or by a vote of this council, address challenging on a legal way the contract with FMPA one? Or will this council take up the measure of whether or not to join the county and the town of Indian River shores in their effort of challenging this, this matter sometime in the future? Are you planning to have that agenda, Ida? And secondly, during this rate structure, Mr. O'Connor, and you've done a fine job, city manager, I appreciate this reduction, and I appreciate all your work on the, on the sale into now. Are you going to, as part of this rate structure, address the OUC charges? There's great question about whether the OUC charges are correctly calculated. And will this rate structure do this, or are we going to have to, to have activity from a motivated, in other words, what are we willing to do? You know, sort of like the Klondike bar commercial. What are you willing to do for a Klondike bar here? What are we willing to do for a sale? Are we willing to legally challenge the FMPA? Are we willing?
Yes. If I may, Wayne, would you explain the process, what a validated contract is?
Well, of course, I wasn't there when those contracts or the original bonding, what have you, was approved. But all these projects were financed and through the sale of public bonds. And part of that process is the validation process, where you go to circuit court. Circuit court validates what, what you're doing. Part of this process with FMPA, I am told, included validation of the contracts, legality of the contracts. And in fact, it was taken a step further to the Florida Supreme Court, which is basically where it ends. And they also validated, and I am again told, the contracts, project contracts. And they also validated, and I am again told, the contracts, project contracts were also validated as part of that bond validation process. So if that is in fact the case, raise judicata comes into play, and it means you can't challenge the contracts.
Thank you very much.
I mean, you can, but it's not likely you're going to prevail.
The territory, for instance, we were just looking, I went over to, and the city manager was very helpful in getting the territorial agreements that currently exist, and we're not even really, we weren't able to actually determine what that territory was, you know? And because apparently, we have had other territory going out to I-95, that we have either traded or sold to FPNL in the past. So the question, the constitutionality, I understand your, everybody is telling you that they, that we are contractually ironclad slaves forever, okay? I'm not sure that I believe that. So the question is, is are we ever going to, are we just going to sit and take it? Or are we ever going to actually attempt to, to challenge the contract? Or are we going to challenge the partial idea of a two-step sale? See, I don't think it's a partial sale. I think it happens in two steps. Two-thirds of your customers leave, and then leaving one-third, and you're going to have to, it's going to cause you to do something else with the other third. Anyway, those are really, will these rate considerations take into effect what these long-term considerations are?
Mr. Wilson, you know, the electric thing is extremely complicated, as the city attorney and Mr. Kramer point out. And we can't do that chapter and verse tonight, we couldn't even do it this week. This city council has, and if Jim wants to comment, he can, but we're moving forward to complete the sale, if that's possible, period. And we'll do that if it's possible. The issue here has nothing in the world to do with that. In other words, in the meantime, the city council has the responsibility to know that our rates are proper, that they're as low as they can possibly be. What I have, what I said was, I did not see that measures like the 4.2% or the 1.2% in January, I don't know that this will result in any rate reduction whatsoever, I don't know that. But what I have said is, I do not see that actions the city will take to reduce rates will ever get us down to Florida. No, I won't say ever, ever is a long time. Will get us down to Florida Power and Light, I'll leave the word out. I just don't see it. And furthermore, I repeatedly said, selling an electric utility would free up the corpus, the estate, the cash, working cash, and we could therefore fund our pension deficit. So we would, I hate the cliche, kill two birds with one stone. They're just, they're simply, they're not connected issues. This issue is not connected. And what we're dealing with here, and if you'll, if you'll bear with me, what we're dealing here with is this a good idea? And I think the city manager and others think that it's a good idea to understand whether our rates are proper. And it has nothing in the world to do with pressing forward. We have hired another attorney, and at least I am committed to press forward. If it can be done, we're going to do it.
Well, the two questions that I, and I attended the county commission meeting, and one of the discussions at the county commission meeting, in case you all weren't there, was a report from Commissioner Zork about the, what happened at the FMPA's finance meeting. And part of it was very interesting, when the FMPA found out about the $200,000 audit, and what that meant to them. And so I suggested, rather than go through, why don't you take a chance to go look at that county commission meeting, it's about 9:45, it was a very short meeting, to hear Commissioner Zork's discussion of going to the FMPA and their reaction to that, to that audit. So my question, I, this is, I don't have any problem with a rate structure review. It seems like it hasn't been reviewed since I was on the council in 2009.
That's correct.
So that's, that sounds like it probably is time, is time to do that. My follow-up question from not, at public comment, is, is there any intention of this city council to take up legal challenges to the FMPA in the future?
Mr. Wilson, actually, that's not the topic open for discussion at this point in time. I'm sorry, I hate to be, apply to you. What we're dealing with here is this particular issue.
All right. Perhaps, when exactly is it that you would like me to bring, make this question?
City council meeting, public comment.
Next time at city council meeting, public comment. So I will ask, when and if this council is going to consider legal action, and you will be able to answer me?
You're certainly in public comment, when it is open public comment. This is about a specific topic, you have every right to do so.
Thank you so much for your help, sir.
No, and, you know, thank you for your comments. I do, one other, one other comment, too. You know, the substantial thing that I said was, I would never be willing to penalize one group of rate payers within the city at the expense of another, whether it be the city people at the expense of the county, or the county at the expense of the city. And what I said was, there's $917,000 of pay or take to FMPA, which I don't like. I don't, wouldn't have been involved in signing it all those years ago, and you know, that has to be considered. So that was my concern, that all rate payers be treated the same. I wanted to clarify that, and I don't want to dig further into it, but you asked what I said, that's what I said.
Mr. Mutcher mentions often that there seems to be two kinds of people in this, left in this conversation, people who are concerned about FMPA's contractual rights, and people who are concerned about the rights of the city of Vero Beach and its rate payers and taxpayers. And I just feel like we should be concerned about the rights of the rate payers and taxpayers, and I really don't care about FMPA. Thank you.
Yeah, and you heard me say at that particular meeting that I work for the public. I don't work for anybody else, so that's how it is.
Okay. Comment to answer one of his questions. When we do the rate structure analysis, the, it'd be my opinion that any vendor would have to look at our power supply contracts, i.e. the OUC and FMPA contracts, to figure out how that power is itemized and quantified by the supplier. So they would come into those points of those discussions.
And you know, I think that's needed, I really do. After listening to the presentation, I can't remember what it was, Finance or Utilities, it seemed like it was needed.
Mr. Havitt?
Go ahead.
As far as rate sufficiency study, although we haven't had an outside one done since '09, I really feel that we are addressing the, our electric rates in a prudent manner. We're making sure we have reserves, we're not rating, rating our, our funds to try to artificially lower the rates. I think it is being managed prudently. I would, however, be interested in doing a rate structure study and possibly an optimization, but I'd like to see a clear, defined scope of work with strategic goals and an estimated cost for that work.
Yeah, and you're entirely right. You would like to make that a motion, the city manager bring that forward, I think that would be appropriate.
So moved.
Second.
Third.
We have public comment, though. We have to have public comment before we vote, please.
Same name, Joseph Cofanti, same address, Holly Road. Turner just asked the question, how much this is going to charge? And I, that's Mike, one question. The other question is, what's changed since 2009 that would affect a cause to have a study? What has changed? And I, before you go off and get a study, I'd like to know in writing what has changed.
We will bring back a scope of work, and what has really changed is the, the profile of consumption since 2009, especially in our larger users, as to, for example, the airplane, aircraft company has changed, their workforce has dramatically changed since 2009, which would indicate their supply and demand, and what their demand, peak demand will be. The hotels, with the growth of hotels, especially on the beach area and in our service area, will change the profiles. And the rate structure is really reflective of the profile of how we consume power in the city of Vero Beach. And so there have been changes over that period of time.
Yeah, and I said, there's probably, you said it's going to be a minor part of the whole thing, that really, where you're going to be looking for the rate structure, any revisions from there that we might be able to improve and optimization. Because I think rate sufficiency, I said, we're covered.
That is correct. And so we'll work on doing an RFP and trying to get some estimates on how to put that together, and estimates of cost.
Okay, I have a motion and second, Mrs. Vok. Or do we do it orally?
Oral.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Proposed. Passes five, nothing. New business, is there any new business? Seeing city council members' comments, I can't say enough about this city and the airshow, and the fine young people who are here and our military. It's redundant, I won't really say more than that, but it was wonderful, it really was. I did one other thing that I haven't touched on here, I did touch on a bunch of things. And one of them I did, before they closed up the pit, I went to the bureau man and had a tour, and I found it most interesting. One thing that I found interesting was, I don't know how many feet down they are, less than a, than a person is tall. And I asked them why, and they said, well, you know, that was the amount of material that had built up since, in those 10,000 or 20,000 years, whatever the years were. And then when they got to that level, then they were back to the level of the sand. They also said, that I thought was extremely interesting, that when, when that site was active, when there were living things there, hopefully human beings and mastodons and so on, the ocean was 60 miles, 60 miles to the east. I found that extremely interesting. I think they're going to find some good things there, but they have been quite, quite quiet. They haven't really been willing to leak any information.
No, but the good news is they're going to be back next January.
You go ahead, you've got the forum.
No.
Mr. Kramer.
Well, 60 miles is a heck of a lot of beach erosion, that's all I can say. I don't know how much it'd cost to take, put it, put it back.
I think it's bad now, it should have been around.
I think most of us, most of us council members were at the airshow. I think this will be a memorable moment that a lot of us will always remember. Had a really good meeting with the Main Street of Vero Beach, and I just want to say a big thank you to Debbie Mayfield, who got through our licensing for our Downtown Fridays, so we will, we definitely say a big thank you for Debbie for getting that passed legislation. Last weekend, we spent some time with Kids Blast, with the Buggy Bunch. One of the great new organizations, I was extremely impressed, a lot of people came out to put a booth for kids to have activities. Really want to say thank you to our lifeguards, to our police department. The county was there, supervisor of elections was there, had a lot of great activity for kids. It's really nice to start seeing some activities for the younger folks in town. And just, you know, just a reminder, Memorial Day on Monday, May 26, 8:30 in the morning, please show up, Memorial Island, it's a wonderful, wonderful event.
Thank you very much. Ms. Turner?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Have a couple of committee reports. The first being the FMPA meeting, that was held last Thursday. I attended the audit meeting, and it started at 8:30, and that one, they reviewed the capital appreciation bonds that are held under the St. Lucie project. What this is, is that $151 million is of, of bonds are being held for the St. Lucie project, and FMPA has invested them in California school districts. So there's certainly some question among the members as to the strength of these investments, and their auditors said that Moody had downgraded many of these bonds, but they're watching them daily, and they felt secure with it. They had reviewed the debt ratios on our project, and I thought this was interesting. St. Lucie project has 82%. This is total debt to assets. The Stanton project has 78%. And although the mayor may think that those, that obligation will be paid off in 2019, I don't think so. In 27 years, we've only paid about 20% of that debt.
Yeah, I'm just...
So in the next five years, that's not going to be paid down.
I'm just going with what Craig Dunlap said. If he's wrong, he's wrong, I can't help it. He may be right, I don't know.
And Stanton II project is 97% is the debt ratio. So these are some things for us to certainly keep an eye on. There will be an additional workshop on the tailor swaps on August the 20th. The issue of the state audit did come up at the FMPA meeting. FMPA said that they would comply, that they had nothing to hide, although there did seem to have some of their lobbyists calling Governor Scott. They felt that under 361.2, which is the statute of that audit, that FPL and Duke Energy might be pulled into that. I inquired from the general manager about FMPA quantifying our consequential damages and stranded costs, since at our April meeting, that he had told Vera that we would have those numbers by mid-May. Mr. Guerilla said that they may not have any hard numbers, but that they would respond now by early June. Their chief counsel claims that they tried to set up a meeting with Vera this month, but that Vera was delayed, Vera was not available. Throughout the meeting of FMPA, there was a great deal of discussion on what they call peak shaving and demand-side management. Several of the all requirements projects have made significant investments to reduce their power costs by decreasing their peaks, when they're faced with these very high-power bills. The ARP board voted to ban any peak shaving technology, because this shifts load from one member city to the other. So when we have some of our smaller cities that are facing incredibly high power costs, they're essentially pulling out that $20 million investment, or whatever they made, and saying, no, you can't use that technology anymore. I tried to point out at the meeting that the local investments were desperate efforts by these cities to reduce their power costs, and that the FMPA was not addressing the cause of the problem. I will continue to press, press forward with the FMPA to look at our project costs, particularly our Stanton and Stanton II. You might find it interesting, as you drive out to the airport, that if you, on 528, if you look to the north, and you see this big concrete cooling tower, which many people think is a nuclear plant. It's actually Stanton I and II.
Cooling tower.
Orlando, Orlando Utilities Commission Stanton I and II projects. So at least you'll know where those are. I think that's all I have on FMPA report. I do have some backup on the St. Lucie bonds, if anybody's interested in those. At the tourist development council, they stated that our tourist tax revenue for the year is up 11%. We reviewed the authorized uses of tourist tax. We have a 4% tourist tax, 1.5% is to tourism, of which Indian River Chamber takes 70%. We have a 1.5% that goes to beach renourishment, and 1% goes to Dodger Town debt, and that's established by the county commission. At the council, we received budget presentations from several groups that were soliciting funds for the 14, 15 budget, that included the cultural council, Indian River Historical Society, Treasury Coast Sports Commission, Vero Heritage, and our Main Street. The council recommended that all requests be funded and be forwarded to the county commission. That required a bit of reduction from some of the members to meet the budget, and we'll see what, how the county commission handles that from there. In the interest of time, I will just take one of these issues. I'm going to try every meeting to give you some kind of lagoon update, or something on what's, some interest in what's going on in our lagoon, so you know that the city and the community, we are still keeping this in the forefront. Tonight, I'd like to highlight the Vero Beach Power Squadron. Their members have donated 13,575 hours and over $10,000. The total value of these would be around $400,000 to activities that benefit Indian River County and our lagoon. Talked about the Oyster Reef, lagoon, lagoon cleanups, environmental learning center. They've been a great, a great partner in our community, and just want to, you know, we appreciate the Vero Beach Power Squadron. Attended the law enforcement memorial. Attended the law enforcement memorial monument, Reef Placement Center. Judge Peg spoke and had some great words saying, hey, you have to keep in mind that, you know, we look at our police officers and they are in harm's way, under pressure, under stress, under excited, you know, people. And then the rest, the rest of government, you know, judges look at it in air-conditioned room where they're safe, there's no chance of harm. And he was very supportive of our, our law enforcement community. Just want to remind everybody Downtown Friday will be on May the 30th. It's going to be an 80's disco funk night. Big hair polyester and leisure suits, if you remember those days. And one of the terrific fundraisers in our community is the Youth Guidance Annual Luau, which will be held at Grand Harbor on May the, May the 30th, May the 30th, sorry. May, I'm sorry, thank you. I needed help. Saturday, May the 31st. So that's a great, a great function, a good band, and it was a wonderful event.
Ms. Graves?
I attended the Beech and, Indian River County's Beech and Shores Preservation Committee meeting yesterday, and the legislature has given about $49 million to beach preservation this year, and Indian River County received about $4.6 million of those. They aren't guaranteed, but they're possible. One of the projects they're looking at is placing a reef by August, also different sand restoration projects. And we are part of Sector 5 in the city, and we have been deemed critically eroded. So we should possibly be on a calendar schedule of receiving some beach renourishment projects through the county, hopefully, not going to jinx it. But, and also just a huge thank you to the airshow and all the volunteers. I mean, it was really hot, I got sunburned, and those volunteers were out there just working and working and working. And I saw Anthony Salmon's just covered in dirt from the parking, getting people out. I mean, they were really committed. I didn't think I liked airshows and I was wrong. It's incredible. So, thank you.
I think there were 700 of them there, something.
Yeah, 800 and some. Unbelievable.
Amazing. I'll keep this short and let's get out of here. I went to the NPO, I keep using the Metropolitan Planning Organization, there was no major trauma there. I went to the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council, however, and I found out it was a couple of interesting things. Congressman Murphy was there and gave us an update on the All-Award, Florida issue. And what was nice to find out was, all the issues that we locally have been talking about through the rail commission and everything, have made their way up to the congressional level, which was very, very happy to hear that he was, he wants 75 days, we still held out for 90 days for the environmental impact study. The troubling part was, good news, bad news. The bad news was, I asked him, when this loan goes through, it's a 1.5 billion or whatever it's going to be, that, that's public funds. And once you use public funds, I think that the, there should be available a financial statement for the corporation. And he said, no, that's not the way it works. And I said, well, why don't you explain that to us? Evidently, this whole loan is going to go through at a cabinet level. There will be no congressional investigation, no, nobody gets to look at this whatsoever. The Department of Transportation will decide whether or not the loan is viable or not. And that's just outrageous to me. I don't, there's nothing you can do about it.
No, and with the record they've had, as far as loans or salendra and other things.
Yeah. That's what everybody was saying, salendra, salendra, you could hear it in the background. But that was, but I'm, good news, bad news. The other thing that I'll ask the city manager, somebody came up and gave a speech about city marinas. They said, city marinas will now be taxed. I didn't know we weren't taxed. Are you familiar with?
We have, we have to charge sales tax, but being taxed.
Not, not ad valorem.
Ad valorem?
Property tax. No, this case law says that they're exempt because it serves.
I'll get, I'll get you a name and we'll chase that down.
We, we charge tax on items that we sell and that kind of stuff, so we collect taxes.
There's no, there's no road tax on the fuel. Is that what they're talking about, maybe?
There is tax, there's tax on the fuel because you're being consumed by a private.
Yeah, there's tax on it, not road tax. They don't use the roads. From my boating days, I found this out.
Cindy can.
Okay, I'll, I'll get, that's all right, Cindy.
The only thing I'd like to point out about sales taxes, it's not something that we pay, it's something we collect from the consumers and pass through to the state of Florida. So that wouldn't impact us, it would just change the amount we'd charge our customers. But we don't pay, we don't pay ad valorem taxes. That would directly impact our business if.
This guy left before I could collar him, so I'll have to chase this down later on. I thought you might have something to do with it. That's all I have, Mayor. Move to adjourn.
We stay in adjourn.